Apparently we're having a meeting.
Well, good afternoon and welcome to today's work session. Today is Monday, February the thirteenth, thirteen, twenty twenty-three. The time is now three oh one P M, actually three oh two P M. The work session will be city council while I come to order. We have three items on file to discuss today. Item one is a thirty-minute downtown parking discussion. Item two is discussion process for appointments to the boards and commissions. And item three is donations funding policy discussion. So let's go ahead and get started with the thirty-minute downtown parking discussion. Mr. Ruder, I guess you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's getting to the last word. Yes, right, exactly. Good enough. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. All three of these items are me today. But let's start with the thirty-minute downtown parking discussion. The impetus for this is I received a request from from Cavon for his new co-op that will be opening this spring. He asked if we could consider a couple of thirty-minute parking spaces directly outside of his building so we can have some more transitory traffic. So people who just want to come in and out and get groceries. It's not a bad idea. However, I think we're we'd be setting ourselves up for some equity issues with other businesses downtown. So we wanted to kind of get some feedback from you all today on just thoughts on how we can strike a balance of having a little bit more transitory parking while at once preserving, you know, people's ability to still have time to go have lunch. If it's going to be more than thirty minutes or if they're going to a hair salon to be able to do those types of things as well. So we just wanted to see, we're thinking about maybe designating some zones. That would be thirty-minute parking. And I have to give Otter the credit for this suggestion. And that would be at our corners, the last spot. Each one of those make those thirty minutes right on the edge. And then the internal parking would remain two hours as it is now. So it's kind of trying to strike a balance where we have more of that transitory parking where people can really get in, get out, be less than half a block away from where they're going. And then also be able to have tourists and our residents come in, enjoy downtown and park for a couple hours if they want to do some some shopping and strolling. So just wanted to kind of present that to you and get your thoughts on parking downtown when it comes to at least being a little bit more transitory and providing that option for people to have a quick in and out.
Well, you know, when I saw this, I originally thought that would be a problem. But, you know, I like the thought that Otto came up with. I think that was an excellent opportunity, a good possibility. So let's go ahead and open it up to council. What's your what are your thoughts?
How much area are we talking about?
So it would just be at every intersection. So probably from Animas to Commercial, would you say? Yeah, probably those intersections there. And then all four corners would have one thirty-minute parking spot.
Probably Animas to Maple.
Animas to Maple, yeah, we'd want to catch that block as well.
Nothing down on Commercial, correct?
Nothing on, no, we wouldn't touch Commercial at all. We could, I mean, that can be part of the discussion as well.
You don't think that would be an interference with other business owners?
Well, they would still have the availability of the entire block of parking that wouldn't be thirty minutes. So there's still several spots in between those thirty-minute spots that they could they could park there. We do have some business owners that they themselves park on Main Street right outside of their building as well.
And they stay there all day?
Yeah, they do. And that is a concern that we're highlighting as well. Really, even the two-hour, I mean, it's meant for for the families that come down and just want to have a two-hour shopping stroll downtown, but then move so that someone else can have that spot and encourage more people going in and out of our businesses.
Send someone to monitoring?
It it is a police department effort and they're obviously strapped for resources. So a lot of it, unfortunately, at this point, would be self-policing. But it would be making that change where people, hopefully, who are trying to do the right thing, would have that option to have thirty-minute parking at our intersections.
I think we should give it a try. It's something the council, I think, we've we've discussed in the past prior to you being here, Mr. Ruder. But the problem is the policing. I mean, it's going to be an honor system for sure. I think what we need to do, if we're going to designate those spots, we need to delineate spaces. Because if you look on Main Street, there's four cars parked or five cars could park. So there's no lines to suggest where they're going.
Yes.
I think our biggest issue is business owners parking on Main Street. But, you know, I don't know how to, something we need to address in the future.
And you're right. Matter of fact, I thought that when we did our striping downtown.
Yeah.
That we were going to delineate the parking places, you know, whatever is a twenty-foot space for each parking so that people would know that is a parking space. And then what we could do is actually signage that.
Absolutely, the signage part's easy and we can we can make that happen pretty quickly. I believe we are still moving forward. And Otto, correct me if I'm wrong, we have some bicycle striping that we'll be doing at some point. Bicycle lanes.
Sometimes, I don't know timing on it, but we're supposed to.
But loud and clear, we can look into what it would take to stripe those parking spaces. I think it's a good idea before we get to the summer.
Disabled spaces aren't even well worked.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, if we're going to, if we want to patrol that or police that, they have to be designated. We have to be, yeah.
Yeah.
Other other thoughts?
Great.
Not for me.
Well, I just think the biggest issue is how you're going to enforce it. And I just, I just, the honor system isn't going to work. I mean, people are just going to park. The other thought, I mean, it has to do with parking, but kind of illegal parking. We need to really put some signs up on Main Street going east, right there where the old Cosman's building is. Because at night, people think that's a parking area and it isn't. It's a traffic lane, especially people from out of town. They park there and it blocks that lane off. And it really is a bad deal. But, you know, I brought it up before. They were supposed to put some signs up on those poles there that no parking at all there. But that would be, well, you know, other than that, it'd be a good idea. But I think the self-policing is going to be the biggest issue.
It is.
You know, but that's going to be the toughest.
I I think it's a good idea to have it closer into in-and-out spots. And I I think it might be a good idea to poll the businesses on the street and see if there are any others that want a couple thirty-minute spaces. For instance, Coles might want a thirty-minute space. Anything like that, the pod shops down on Commercial might want thirty-minute spaces at least during the day. I I think if it becomes more of, there are more of them, then there's more awareness of it. And the more that they are there, I think it's more likely that people will comply with thirty minutes. I get why we're thinking of the end of the blocks, but I'm not thinking that really helps the businesses that are looking for in-and-out traffic. So I'd be interested to hear what other businesses would have to say besides Cavon's.
So I guess peak hours, weekends not included, something like that, or?
I think it should include Saturday for me.
It should include Saturday, okay. And like after after six o'clock, it's just normal parking, something like that. I agree with Ogletree about finding what other businesses would like to see bars parking. Because our loading and unloading, people might want that thirty-minute spot in their spot for their own personal use, like they got to unload and do their little, you know, thing with wares. Also, as far as, is there a fine or what bars policing? What's the?
That's, I don't mean to go out there, but that itself, parking is enforced. People get a citation if they violate a parking regulation.
And what's the fine on that?
I don't, I, well, it's a fifteen-dollar fine and then court costs. So it'd be like fifty-five dollars. It's just hard to know, like, when somebody goes into a thirty-minute parking place and when the, you know, meter begins running.
Right.
Speaking, yeah.
I think, you know, I would hope though that the police department does sporadic kinds of enforcement efforts just so that people don't think they never enforce it. They may not have time to do it every day, but they should do it every once in a while just so that people know they're taking a risk.
And they do, I mean, they they do the two-hour, but you're right, and it is sporadic. I couldn't say, but in the thirty minutes, I understand what you're saying. Would be good for them to enforce that as well.
I think the, it would be really nice, and I understand the desire there on the business owner's part to have that higher turnover of parking. I think it would be really nice to accommodate it. But my concern is if we start getting down to the granular level of who wants what. I mean, you're in effect trying to build a custom parking plan for the whole community of downtown. And then no matter where you put bounds on it, you're almost going to exclude somebody. And, you know, they'll want to discuss it. So I think the idea of the corners is a really good idea. And it does, to your point, it does put people within, you know, half a block at most if that spot's available. I kind of wonder if maybe we couldn't stretch it to per side. That's, I don't know what anyone else thinks, but I think, you know, and I would like to know, and I don't think anyone here has the question, of a hundred cars that park on a downtown road, what what percentage of those people come for less than thirty minutes? That's an answer we probably don't have, although we maybe can get it with that cell phone tracking. I don't know how to mine into that. But I think it's a good idea. And I think it'll be hard to do a custom parking plan, so the corners is the next best option. I'm wondering if we should bump it a little bit. That's my input.
Okay.
So the the corners would be, would that be a little longer or the thirty minutes that you're talking about?
The corners would be thirty minutes, so.
And all the intermediate ones would be two-hour timeframe?
Yeah.
The other thing that we've discussed in the past, and this is still, this is when we back, we discussed about hiring an outside firm to put in parking meters. There is a lot of places in the state even that are doing parking meters. I'm not sure if that's something that maybe we would want to revisit or consider? Or is it out of the question? And then it would put, take our police department off of the, you know, where they would not police it, where it would be that company that takes care of it. So that would take care of that part, but that would be maybe a different discussion. However, I do feel that the corner was probably the ideal way to go right now. And, you know, I agree that if you start putting, trying to get questions or answers from, what the questions from other businesses, what in front of my bill, they're all going to say, well, I want a parking place in front of my bill, they're all going to say that. So I think that, I think that we decided the decision, I think we just have to make and a policy that we have to put in place, that this is the opportunity for that thirty-minute and then those are two are two hour.
What about just having a category of business rather than polling, but just the businesses that are are likely to be counting on in-and-out traffic, in-and-out traffic like, for instance, Coles, this co-op, anything along Main or Commercial that's of that nature, I think they probably would appreciate having that turnover in front of them. It would really help their businesses. Because I know there are times I drive downtown and I'm like, oh, do you know what to park? What am I going to do? And kind of, and it might be, you know, discourage you from going in and spending money there just because there isn't any where to park. That's an obvious point, but I think there are some businesses that really do count on that. Maybe Smoke Friendly is another one, kind of, but that one is, you know, that one you could do.
It's off the corner, yeah.
Corner positions on that, any kind of in-and-out.
Well, I think the discouraging part of some of the businesses is that they are parking in front of the, on the streets and staying there all day. You know, I've seen that, you can go down the rain time of the day and at night, and there's a car parked there. Been there for days. And they, I don't know if they live upstairs or what, but there's a car, someone, I haven't seen them lately, but they're for a while. It was there by the bank building, there's National Bank building down the street building. So I think that the enforcement needs to be that these business people, they need to find a different place to park. I think that's where the patrolling really needs to come into play.
Parking force of few.
Some places, like even on Main Street where Coral Pond is, they they usually park in the back, but sometimes the whole that the whole area.
Well, you take even, you know, the on the other side of the street, there's a lot of parking on the backside of the street. You know, like the heat ads and the doors and the parking place on Commercial Street where it's not that far.
Some people are afraid to walk for a block.
And, you know, you're talking like Colby's, well, there's a whole tire, whole parking lot. Yeah, right around the corner, that's within a few steps. So, I mean, I think every every business would want parking right in front of me. That would be their desire. So I think it's just a policy that we have to come up with.
Yeah, and Mayor, that's what today's about, just getting some feedback from you all. And then we'll come with a formal policy that you all can adopt. And less than I can work, I don't know if we need to make ordinance changes. We'll look into that and see if there's anything that specifies time. I would imagine we might need a agreement.
And I think like the pod shops, you know, downtown, I think most of the people that come in, they come in and they buy and they go all elsewhere. Or they go wherever they go. They may leave town, they may stick around. It's like, I think this policy.
So, and this may not work on every block because of parking restrictions or ever. What about sort of a hybrid in the sense of like one, the last, the last corner spot and then one or two middle spots? Because then at that point, you're a quarter block from wherever. And if, I mean, I don't know.
And it's a good idea, and I really appreciate council member Ogletree's, you know, questions. We thought about that too. And then we started running into some issues. There's places where there's fire hydrants outside in front of a business, so we wouldn't be able to offer them thirty-minute spots directly in front of their business. So the corners just seem to be the one that made the most sense equitable wise.
I think that that's the, makes the best the most sense.
Whatever we do, I think we ought to be doing with an eye to the future of having more workforce housing downtown and thinking through what we're going to, and there are people living there, because there are certainly.
Very, very in ways.
Well, the thing about it with workforce housing, that's what I mentioned on that when we talked about housing, is that the workforce housing, they're going to have to come up with their idea of parking and not on the streets. And I think they have to come up with some sort of an idea of where they want their their people to park. The tenants to park. I think that's a given.
A lot of people have brought up, you know, workforce housing, but I'd like, it's it's a good reminder for everybody. When we discussed it the first time, that was just for their capital funding. And they still have to go through the various.
Plannings.
Yeah, all the steps and that parking will be will be part of that discussion, right?
Oh, yeah, matter of fact, that was one item that I brought up to make sure that they have adequate parking.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah. Okay, and then a discussion.
Right, just to add on to that, parking is a huge issue downtown. It really is. I'd really like to start thinking about a long-term solution. You know, if the, if the opportunity comes up for a decent plot of land downtown built, good on municipal, not on, because there's Trinidad was never built for cars. Yeah, it was built for horses buddies or just horses, raving. But my neighbors to the south and the on Commercial, on the west side of Commercial, because of the configuration of Landina Park and that whole area that's been purchased and is now privately owned, all the business owners on that block have no access to the back of their buildings.
Wow.
Karen, I have, when I talked to Mr. Ruder about this, there is a possibility downtown that I'll bring up and going to discuss at our retreat, a possibility for parking. But in just for today's parking purposes, I mentioned to him that the area where the old dairy used to be, that we go in and grade that down, gravel it at least for now, put parking blocks up or whatever. That would create, and it's within a block and a half, two-block area. I think that's an ideal place for additional parking. And the other, the other area that, and of course for now, I'm not sure if we could, if she'd want to, is discuss it with Dana, the property behind the old Marty's Pharmacy building, temporarily, at least until we can come up with some other ideas.
What was the first one you said?
Right, where the old dairy used to be on, basically it's Second Street.
Oh, second and Commercial, South Commercial.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Because we own that property in there, so I think, now, we've talked about that, but I think it's time that we try to make some use of it. And it would, there would be not a, it wouldn't be that costly. It would just be grading it, graveling it.
But we'd have to cover the ditch.
Man, Frank and his ditch is.
Why don't we just take a look at the views? Well, the other thing too is that, you know, we can talk to Knights of Columbus. There's access to go in from that side.
Yeah, but I mean, there is a really big ditch there, and you know, you have to follow around. You have to cover, yeah, you know, which the first National Bank did. Remember when they had that old building there? They covered it with a big culver. And I don't think that'd be an issue. And then that would make the, of course, give us more parking too. It would make a good-sized lot with it.
It is.
And the Knights of Columbus, they don't do a lot, could probably talk to them.
I mentioned that before about asking them during the, because the only time they really use it.
It's the evenings.
Because the evenings are when they have meetings and stuff, Tuesdays. So I I think we have some good possibilities for that downtown area.
Yeah. Well, that would be a good place for businesses, them to park their cars, because it's not that far to walk. And set up something that way you can keep a little off the streets.
You know, the other thing we can consider doing down the road is if this other parts of the property and that we're, that I'm thinking about, if it's accessible or even the one on the old dairy, is maybe some of these businesses, if they want to have a personal parking place, we can do that too.
Sounds good. We're getting a little off the the topic of thirty-minute downtown parking.
It all ties in together.
Kind of does, but I just wanted to also mention that for what it's worth, I did speak with the chamber about businesses parking in front of their their stores and encourage them to do whatever they can with their membership to have them recognize that's supposed to be transitional parking for people who are enjoying our downtown. So hopefully that'll have an effect. But I think we do, even with thirty-minute parking, ultimately, the comments that have been made about enforcement are the biggest issue. So if at some point we want to consider having a traffic enforcement officer or something like that down the road, we can talk about those things. But I think at this point, again, this is just an idea for the self-policing side of things. And I think we have enough information now to come back to you all with a proposal. And then we can look at that, we'll bring some maps as well. And then that way we can kind of get a sense of what this would all look like.
What we need to do too, Mr. Ruder, is maybe do a P R campaign to notify people that this is what it's going to be and this is the problem we're having. So they'll know what those thirty-minute designated parking spots are for.
Ensuring them.
I think, yeah, always works.
Yeah. I think what we do is, all those businesses in the areas we're talking about, just send them, you know, a notice. Saying that, please find parking other than street side.
Yeah, right, we see you. The way that's too.
Any other comments? Yeah, I think that will kind of.
Great, thank you.
Item number two, discussion of process for appointments to boards and commissions.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is another issue that that I wanted to bring up. We've gotten some feedback from some of our boards and commissions. So in twenty nineteen, you all adopted a resolution that stated that boards and commissions will vet their members for reappointment or new appointment and then make a recommendation from you to you all. So we just wanted to talk about the process and I wanted to highlight some things and some concerns that have been brought to our attention. So three concerns. The first one is specific planning and zoning, they're they're uncomfortable vetting their own members. So they did make that comment at a meeting. Why are we having this conversation? This is the council's decision. They should be deciding who's on this and we'll work with whoever. The second concern is there are a couple of boards and commissions that have a misunderstanding, which we can clarify, but I just want to highlight that it's coming up. They feel very strongly that whoever they vote on to recommend is the person they're going to get. And I think there's a disconnect. They don't realize that ultimately it's you all's decision whether to take that recommendation or not. And then the third issue that that we've seen is boards and commissions get comfortable with their membership. So we we've seen where people keep getting reappointed and reappointed based on their recommendation, even though there may be some newer applicants. So we just, I just wanted to bring this to you all and have a have a discussion of, are we okay with the current process? Do we want to make changes? There there are some good things about the current process as well, because I think there there needs to be some level of vetting these people and a decision-making process. If at a minimum, I'd like to see more consistency on how that's done with our various boards and commissions. Some of them interview members, some of them just look at resumes, some of them they just go off whoever staff recommends. So at a minimum, I think we should put some policies in place. But I wanted to kind of bring this to you all. Ultimately, you are all the deciding factor as to who gets placed on a board or commission. And you have you have every right to appoint whoever you all want as a as a city council. So just wanted to open it up to discussion based on those things.
Discussion, right?
Do not all boards have the same criteria for their membership?
No.
For example, like somebody's on the advisory board, what if they were ousted from a previous board and someone's not highly recommended because this person quit after a month or whatever?
No, they they can provide a fresh application if they wanted to serve on a different board. And they they would be, they could be considered.
Well, this too came up originally years ago, because we were the, I think, were you here, Eric, when we talked about boards and commissions? Just for explanation, what was happening was people would apply for a board, they'd be approved for that position and never show up for the first meeting. So it was actually at the advisement of the boards and commissions themselves, because they used to meet, the chairs used to meet. And so they came to council and asked us if we could do some type of vetting first or let people know what their position on this board is. And then if they're still, they, really what we wanted is these applicants to come to a board meeting to see what their duties were, okay? So that's what that, why we brought that in. And it's strange, because we are a hundred and eighty-degree turnaround. Now, we never had enough people to serve on a full board or commission, and now we have more. But I think maybe we need to clarify that. I just, the process was just suggested for the reasons that I just stated. Because I want, we wanted to make sure that the people that wanted on the board knew what they were getting into. So I think basically if anybody, my feeling is, just to be completely fair, is if you're, you you have to go to a meeting. And then if you're still willing to serve on that board, then all the names of all the people that still want to continue on come to council. And and we vote on that.
And that's certainly something we can amend the resolution and make it mandatory that they attend a meeting. And then, I don't want to say cut out the process, but but take away some of the ambiguity that comes out of the the boards and commissions themselves talking about who their members are. One of the concerns I've heard recently that that is concerning to me is, you know, questions of, if someone comes to a meeting and participates and has discussion, are they forming a relationship with the board? And is that going to bias their opinion of who they should select? But I think the same argument could be for someone who's up for a reappointment. They've worked with that board or commission for a long time. And certainly there might be a bias towards that person because of a comfortability level. So that's certainly something that we can we can mandate. And if that's the direction of council, I certainly want to hear from everyone else, but that's an easy fix.
Other questions?
Are you looking at, what they, I mean, time limit on people serving on boards? If they could serve a certain term or anything? Because, I mean, you mentioned them, same people on the board all the time and and the people are applying. Is there a a time limit or something that you would kind of look at that?
Many cities do that. And the council has term limits, for example. So our boards and commissions, none of them have term limits as established right now. And that would be a policy decision that I think you all would need to discuss as a group and decide if you want to put those term limits out there. But it is certainly with that, it's not without precedent. A lot of cities do that. I think one of the concerns here is finding enough people to apply for them.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big issue, because if you get rid of somebody and then nobody applies for it.
Yeah.
So maybe have some way, we have to kind of look at doing that. But we also, if somebody else wants to get on the board, you know, we would sure want to give them the opportunity to to get on it. we would sure want to give them the opportunity to get on it and make some, contribute to the city, you know? So fresh ideas sometimes are good to the boards.
Certainly.
Karen, were you, when you were talking about what we did before, I'm starting to remember whether I was here or not. But was it about that they had to show up for a number of meetings, or...?
No, they just had to go to a meeting. Because people were applying for boards without knowing what their duties were as a member of that board. And so we decided to do the resolution that way. That way, they could see who was on the board they wanted to serve with, what their duties were, what their skill set, if any, that they needed. And then if it was, if they still felt they wanted to serve, then the council would appear.
I think, okay. I think we also should look at what is communicated to those members about what it is they're going to do, what are their duties. The boards that I've served on for the city of Trinidad, there wasn't any explanation. It was just, please come to the meeting. And contribute in some way. And, you know, I always did that. But I think that's why people, they don't really understand what the commitment is. It probably, to some of them, feels as though the only one who really does anything is the chairman of that board. So I think this is sort of calling for more, like we planned to do at the retreat, an overhaul of what our boards and commissions are doing. What is it that we're expecting them to do? What is it that we have any sort of a ordinance mandate that they do? So that we would have a way to evaluate. Because when they send someone up here and we say, no, thank you for coming, and we look at what their application said, that's the only thing that we have to judge, whether or not that person's going to be a contributing member. Or where things are at that board, you know, what's happening with it? What will they be doing? We've been very hands-off, I think somewhat too hands-off about that. I think, certainly because we don't want to frighten people about making a commitment to a board. But at the same time, there are a lot of people who are motivated by that. Oh, I've got this job that I'm doing for the city, and I'm very proud of it, and will work harder when they understand what's expected of them. So I think we'll talk about that at the retreat. But I think this goes to that. Because I really don't know how else to evaluate them. If we don't interview them, if we don't ask them questions, we're just going based on what the board has recommended to us.
And that certainly is something that would be under your purview. When we're doing the appointments, so we say we have a vacancy on our Parks and Rec board. If we have three applicants, and during the appointment process, you want to interview them and then make a decision based on standard interview questions, we can make that happen, too. So to whatever extent you all want to get as involved as possible with the appointments, I think that's a good thing.
Well, I think, to your point, Erin, don't we get, or we used to get, the applications for boards and commissions on our packet every week?
We do.
We do.
But we only see the ones that are recommended to us. We don't see the other people who...
Oh, we don't?
No.
Not the four?
No. The only time we've done that is when we did the P and Z. When we redid P and Z, and we looked at the two that were...
Okay.
But aren't the people that are on the boards that are going through those applications, do they look at it?
They get the four.
And they're the ones that decide?
Yeah.
Is there a policy that we need to change that?
I think it's part of the resolution from 2019 that we would be changing.
What other experience on the board that I want is, board members should also come to more council meetings instead of kind of just waiting until something comes up or they need money or need assistance. I think they need to come and just give us a small briefing of what's going on.
So as it stands right now, I'm just clarifying this for my own understanding. Whether the understanding is there or not, actually, let me start over. Boards and commissions are super important to the functioning of the city. And I've come to learn that. And obviously, I have a huge appreciation for the people that serve on it. Super necessary. That being said, whether there's an understanding or not on the boards and commissions, council does at this point have the final authority to appoint the person, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. That's set by ordinance, so it's a statute.
So I was wondering, as a stopgap measure, would it be possible, would it be a big ask to have, when we have the board, the board's recommendation presented to us in our council packet, would it be a big ask to see the others just as a matter of review?
No, that's certainly something we do provide.
So that, so, because what I'm thinking is, as Councilwoman Odle Tree said, this that we're talking to is very tangential to what we're going to discuss about the interaction of boards and the functioning of boards. So I think it may be best to delay this until then, and at the current moment, just rely on the fact that we do make the decision. And if we can see the other applications in the process, if we have one in between, that'll help us make a more informed decision. And then we won't be making a decision that we would regret or want to come back and revisit. That's my thought.
You know, there's, you know, I've got a few things here that I've written down as I've been thinking then. There is a lot of work that has to get done with this.
Yeah.
I think there is. One of the things that I would feel I think we should do is currently, we have any board or commission member that's coming on in the consent agenda. And I think we need to move that out of the consent agenda and move it to another line item, under new business or wherever. And then allow for us to be able to bring them forward and talk to them, they talk to us. The other thing I think that, in order to be able to do that appropriately is inequitably, would be to come up with an idea of a list of items that they would answer when they do an application for a board or commission. I think one of the biggest problems that a lot of these boards and commissions have are the times that they meet. So I think if we say that, you know, if it's the P and Z board meeting, and they say, this is when we meet, this is the time. Are you able to meet that timeframe of when they, of when we meet on a regular basis? You know, Parks and Recreation, they meet at a different time. You know, some of the, a few items, so that they get an understanding, like I think somebody said here, of what they're, what's expected of them. And I think that's really, really important. As far as term limits go, I think that would be pretty difficult to do, because right now, we have a hard time getting enough applicants, you know, anyhow. If we had, you know, for every time we put some out, we had five or 10, that'd be great. But we just don't have that luxury right now. I think that's an issue that we have. I think the other thing that would need to be asked of them is to, and they probably even expect it, but they don't even know, I think we need to develop training for these people when they are, you know, and come up with an idea, say, there's a, whether it's an hour training or a two-hour training. And say, are you able to attend, if selected, to attend a two-hour training for what you're getting yourself into? I think that's vitally important, so they get a full understanding of what they're, you know, what is expected of them. And I really do agree that if we have, you know, let's say, two positions open and we have five people apply, I think that it'd be good for us to interview all five of those applicants.
Yeah.
To screen them. I think that would be really important, because then allow us to be able to sort through the best applicant. And as far as current board members or commission members, that's going to be the difficult one. Because you may have, you know, a couple of board members that have done a good job. There may be some that have not done a good job. And we could reject that. And that could be, of course, that's our decision. But I think that we need to have a, through you, from what you hear, because you do have those meetings with the boards and commission members, and you can give us a kind of a history of issues, maybe that we've encountered or you've heard about, and ask them, you know, during that interview. And I think that that's, are you willing to continue with this board or commission? However, you know, we have seen these issues, and these are concerns to us. So I think we need to be upfront with these people. I know it's a difficult decision that we have to make. But I think if we're going to move our boards and commissions forward in a really good way, where they all work together. And they also need to understand that there's nothing wrong with differences of opinion. It's just that there are some boards and commissions out there that are in fights, and that's not good. So we need to figure out a way to control that. And actually, the training is a big thing. So, you know, those are my thoughts. I'm not sure if anybody else, any thoughts?
You know, I think another thing, too, that's important is attendance to meetings. Because we've had issues before where a couple of board members, I mean, a couple of board members would come in. We've actually took a couple of people off the board. I've actually dropped people because they weren't coming to attendance. And of course, that goes along with what Bill's, I mean, Phil said about the times, you know, people are available and that. But that might be something we really want to throw in there, that if they're, you know, in there, that if you miss so many meetings or something, then you should have a good excuse. If not, then we need to replace you.
That's in the ordinance.
It's already in there, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the ordinance for each of the boards.
Yeah, one of the issues, and we've had to, you know, basically expel during my tenure, a couple of people. And I think that that's during the training. And I think that's something that they need to understand, that if it comes across that they are not working with the rest of the group and being obnoxious or terrible or whatever with what they're doing.
Yeah.
Council has a right to, not renew or actually terminate their board or commission membership.
So if council's going to interview all of the applicants...
Yeah, I know. Your answer, too.
Yep. I guess a few questions. First of all, I think if that's the case, then it would be best that we done in a work session, and then you vote at the regular meeting?
Yeah.
After you've had time to think on the applicants? Secondly, I think it's problematic to have a seated board, then still make a recommendation to city council? Because if you're going to interview and you would go against that recommendation, well, then, how are those board members going to feel about that? Is it going to create a problem or friction there? I agree, the boards all need training. I would a hundred percent agree with that. They do get a packet of information when someone is seated to a board that's specific to the board that they're seated to. So for instance, Arts and Culture Advisor Commission. They get information about purchasing, about the noticing requirements for public meetings, various things. They also get a copy of the section of the ordinance that is specific to arts and culture and what their role is. And if there's language in the charter that identifies what their role is there as well, they get a copy of that. It's minimal, and I agree with that. But we also have terms that are all over the calendar. And we're in the number of about eighty volunteers right now. So I don't know exactly where we would have time to do something that's meaningful. When we have even our chairs try to get together at one time, at least two of them miss. And so those communications aren't even great. It's difficult, because it's a lot of people, but it's, they're volunteers. They're, you can't force any of them to really do any of that. Most of them want to, and they all want to do a good job, but it's difficult. But that's my two cents, because I think it's going to...
I agree with you with the work session part of it. I think that's a prime time to interview them.
Yeah.
As far as the rest of it goes, I think it's something that we just have to work through that process. And the other thing, too, is I think that through this training, there's kind of lots of subjectivity, but still, part of it, is that they need to understand the position of the chairperson and how they interact with the chair.
Right.
And that's all part of the training, and so that they understand that the chair has the authority during that meeting.
You were going to say something, I don't want to...
Thank you. I think, Audrey, you make some very valid, important points. And I think I would be comfortable with the recommendation if we had the chance to talk to them just for a moment to say, you know, can you tell us why you want to be on the board? They explain what it is that they want to do and why. And then we say, do you understand what the requirements are? And are you willing to comply with those requirements? Just to have that public buy-in, I think, would be helpful and would go a long way. I worry that if we step too far into the role of choosing people, we're going to alienate the leadership of the boards who are trying to get something done and have an idea of what they want to do and what sort of people they need. So I don't want to undermine that. So I think that would be probably a better way for us to do that. So then we have, we not only are requiring them to show up for a consent agenda item, but also just to speak with us briefly. I think that would help. And then on just general topic, I think we could do a better job of recognizing them when they succeed. I think that we haven't done that in a while. There used to be like a recognition afternoon or something like that where we had like a reception or, I don't know that it has to be that, but even just a public recognition of them, what they've done for the city would be really, I think, helpful.
I think one of the things like you did mention is that in order for them to understand what the requirements, I think we list out the five or 10 items or three items, or whatever they might be, so that when they do come in front of us, we can ask them, you know, do you understand or are you aware of the requirements of what you're getting into? And that way, if there's any questions, then it would come up there.
I think, well, no.
But if you wanted to. But it'd be a good time for, good thing to do that.
Mayor, if I could, so it sounds like, though, and I don't know if this is kind of implicit in the comments earlier, but it sounds like there may even be a bit of a move afoot by boards and commissions to not have to do the vetting of the people that are coming forward to serve. Like, they may not want to vet, and just leave it up to council. Maybe I misread it.
I think it would be good for them to give us some input.
Okay.
Because it gives them the ability to feel like they're being, they were honoring what they do.
Totally makes sense. I was just going to say that I am sure the move back in the day historically was, council probably did not really want to have to make the decision. At least, there was a time when the council really agonized over making decisions and selecting people in front of people. And they wanted staff to do everything they could to make that kind of as innocuous as possible. So there was like a vetting by the boards and commissions, and then there was a preference. And let's say that would just get on the consent agenda, that preference. And then council wasn't really having to look people in the eye and say, we choose you and not you and you. And that was always uncomfortable. And then people were like, wow, I'm never going to serve on a board again, because... And it was really tough for council. I'm not sure my comments are really helping the conversation, but it just is, really, it's going to be time-consuming and it's going to be tough if you guys want to do the interview and really, you know, get involved.
If we do the interview and carry a work session, it changes things quite a bit.
Right.
You know, and I just feel like, that's what we were elected to do.
Right.
Make some of these hard decisions.
But I mean, and here's the thing, I get it. And I think that's absolutely right, if you're going to do it, do it in a work session. But it won't be long before you have a work session with ten things on it, and you're going to have, and it's going to be like a three-hour work session, and you're going to begin the interview process for a board or commission, and you're going to have five people to interview, right? I mean, you guys do the heavy lifting, and frequently, I have thoughts like, oh, man, I wish that wasn't something the council had to do. Or I wish that didn't have to be on the agenda. I'm sorry if I'm sharing too much. I do that a lot, right? And it's like, okay, but we, anyway, I just don't know that you really want to do that. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Here's my answer, too. We were saying about having a lot of items on the work session. We always have that capability of, if we have a long one, is to have a separate work session. We always have that capability of taking, if that does arise, and set a different date for a different work session for the interviewing process. I think that's something that, you know, I'm willing to do, and I'm not sure if council would be willing to look at it that way. But I think that would, but I think that would be far and few in between that we would have that problem arise.
Can I add a couple of things?
Sure.
So Planning Commission, I think absolutely that they can't vet themselves. They're quasi-judicial. And I think any of the boards where tourism, they handle a lot of money. I think that's not a good board either for them to be vetting themselves because of the amount of money that they have to deal with. The other ones handle, you know, limited amounts of money, and they have very specific... things that they can do with that based on a budget. And I get that tourism has a budget too, but it's a lot of money. It's a lot more money than a lot of department heads have to deal with in a year. So I think those two, if you still want these, the vetting to be done, I think those have to be exceptions. I think those should be strictly council decisions.
The other thing too is that, you know, I think that maybe some of the applicants may even appreciate giving them that extra time to come before us and talk to us.
And Mayor, what I was going to say, to kind of piggyback on Audrey's, there's nothing, even if we dissolve this resolution, that would prohibit a board or commission from making a recommendation to you all. So that's always an option. I just wouldn't make it mandatory as it is now. Because to Audrey's point, there's some that just don't want to do it besides the conflicts that might arise.
Do you have a question?
I...
Two bucks. I was just going to read the comment. It's becoming pretty apparent, I think, that, you know, cookie cutter solution doesn't exist. It has to be someone custom. And I'm not, I'm not trying to say my idea was the best idea in any fashion, but that's why I'm saying, if going to the, where we're going to discuss the full interaction of the boards and commissions and how they all work, I think if we just include in our packet the whole application, really be diligent to be aware of these ideas that we brought up, until then, we've at least partially solved it until we have come to a full, very well thought out decision.
Well, and I think during our retreat, we may build iron service to them.
Well, you know, I think our little resolution a couple of years ago is, it's convoluted now, but see, we never asked, it was not our intent for the board to suggest us who they prefer to be on the board. Our idea at the time was just to make sure that the people that were applying for these positions, once they see the work, the work that the board was doing, was comfortable in that role. So I never, I never put any, any importance on what the board wanted because mostly, well, I do, but I mean, it's that...
It's just what you want, board, I'm sorry.
I mean, it's unusual in the past because everybody that's applied has been approved because we've always had too many vacancies and not enough applicants. But to Mr. Downs' point, one of the boards I know has seven applicants for two positions. How is this council going to approach that?
It's tough.
And that's why I say, I think that...
It is, and I really am not comfortable doing that. The only way we could do that is the same procedure we did for filling Mr. Councilman Mate's position when Eli was appointed.
Is there, is there an issue doing, it seems like we have more applicants than positions also need to do an executive session. Is there an issue there?
Well, you came to side.
Right.
Yeah, you could talk about it, but I would say, I mean, and I would have to think about what the subject would be for, you know, permissible executive session. I may have answered that to you soon. So maybe not.
Okay.
Okay? And really, the conversation probably should be in public. Right? If you're talking about the attributes or the, you know, shortcomings of candidates for a position, it's better to do that in, I mean, I know it's not fun for you guys, but it's probably better to do that in public. I don't know that there's a legal reason for...
But I personally feel like, as elected people, you know, I think that it's our duty to be able to make that decision whether, if we have two people on for two positions and we decide on one and not the other, I think that's up to us. And if we have seven applying for three or whatever, I know you may not feel comfortable, but I think that that's something that we should do.
I'll just show you, you could have three friends applying for one position, right? You have three friends, and you're going to have to vote for one of those friends to the exclusion of the other two friends, and I'm telling you, you're going to get shunned. They're going to be mad at you, right? There's a lot of that going around, and it's not, it's not as easy as you might think. And people are angry, and they may never forgive. I don't know why I've got all this...
I think it's...
This is a bit of social media too much.
Stop, stop. Stop and think what the process would be using that same scenario as seven people for two positions. So Eli votes on, I move that we accept A and B. Okay, well, so a sec. Okay. No, I, I move that we vote for C and D. How is that process going to go?
I want B and C.
I'm going to get you.
Well, first of all, we would take a vote on the A and B or whatever, and then we'd take a vote on C and D. And that's what you do.
And we've also done written ballots in the past, which sometimes makes it simpler so that it's not motion second and all of that. They're written down, and you sign those ballots, and the information is public.
Exactly.
But it, it makes it cleaner to handle a process like that.
Well, I'm really, I wasn't kidding about the process we used to seat. That worked out very well because it was a point, and the highest point keeps going and...
Right, right. That was, that was a lot of fun.
That was clean.
It was clean, right. It was.
I think there's a reasonable process that we can come up with and make sense.
Okay. It's just, and of course, the ballot that you signed, I mean, that's of course all subject to a court request, so people will know how you voted. It's just, I mean, that's fine. It's time consuming. It's having you vote, you know, for the class president and not confidentially. And it's tough, and it's going to, yes ma'am?
I, I come back to what Ms. Garrett was saying, that there are certain boards where oversight is critical and other ones where it's less critical.
Sure.
And the ones that are quasi judicial or ones that have a large budget that impacts the city in a big way, then I think it's worth that time.
Right, right.
Other ones, not so much, and I'm much happier and content with taking the recommendation of that board and then just having that moment when they come in front of us and we ask them questions and make sure they understand what their obligation is before we say yes.
Good. I think going back to the work session timeframe is actually the best time to talk to these people, these applicants, okay?
And I think what Councilwoman Odell Tree is saying is kind of status quo.
Yeah.
Right? Is kind of status quo.
Except for the other ones that we would be taking a larger role in...
Okay, right, right.
Yeah, that's definitely...
Yeah, right. And I didn't mean to seem like I was arguing against that. I think that totally makes sense, and those two boards are absolutely different and...
I think we just need to, I think we just need to do is refine that application, I think.
Is there, is there any other board that fits into the same as those two?
I don't believe so.
HPC is a quasi judicial.
Yeah, HPC if you want.
True.
You know, we don't know at this point. I'm not sure if Parks and Recreation or outdoor parks would at some point be at that level. I don't know.
And Council, one thing I will say is even some of those other boards, I feel like there's a little bit of discomfort in going through the process of them doing the vetting and making that recommendation to you all. So again, I wouldn't make any of it mandatory. If the board together wants to say, hey, we want to make this recommendation, they have every right to do that. But I still think it's important we get you all every application when you're going through to Councilor Williams' point, so you can see who's out of it. But this is good feedback. I think this is going to require a lot more discussion, but the good thing, and really what I was hoping to get out of this is, is the council's commitment that you all should have a little bit more ownership of the appointment process. So we'll take this feedback and try to strike some balances.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and move on to item three, donations and funding policy discussion.
Yeah. Mayor, this is, now, I don't have recommendations on this one. This is just something I wanted to bring to work to the council. We're going through harder economic times, and so are a lot of our partners in the community. And I'm sure you all have noticed, we're getting hit up for funding requests left and right. We don't really have any process or procedure for how we allocate funds to private organizations. And I just wanted to bring this forward to get some feedback from you all. Do you think we should have a process? Should there be more formality to it? Or are we comfortable with just whoever and coming and asking for funds at a work session? We're kind of struggling with how do we, how do we balance our budget? So glad Cheryl's here, and how do we accommodate that? And how are we being equitable as well? Just because someone first come, first served, we only have limited coffers, and it gets to a point where, you know, Cheryl just slams the door on me when I go to her office and say, can we find money to fund this organization? So I would, personally, as city manager, I would like to see some parameters for how we're donating city money. I'll give you a couple of examples. City of Cherry Hills Village, they have an anti-donation policy in its entirety. So they have a policy that says, we do not give money to private entities that are not governmental. And that's just their policy, and that's that extreme. Pueblo has a process where they, at their budget cycle, they allocate a certain amount of money each year for donations in support of private entities. And then there's an application process that ties in with the budget development, where an entity can apply, answer a whole bunch of questions, and then as policymakers, you can decide who you want to fund. And there's also, I think, amounts that are tied to that as well. So just wanted to get some feedback from you all. Do you think it's a good idea for us to pursue a policy on donations and funding other entities? Are we comfortable with what's happening now? My concern is, we're well into our budget at this point, and we're still getting requests out of this year's general fund, which is all spoken for because you've authorized it and appropriated it, to squeak out money for these private things. I think, I feel very strongly, first and foremost, our mission as a city should be to serve our residents and do our basic services that we're tasked with providing. And so I just wanted to approach you all about maybe adding some formality to how we give out donations.
Well, one of the things that, this was a few years back, that we decided to do is, is we had an organization or two that was coming back, they were getting money from another board or commission, they were coming back to us for additional money. And I think we decided to put a cap on funding overall from the coffers from the city, period. Simply because, because you're getting a tremendous amount of money, and I think that's where we decided, if there's a limit. But I really believe that at the beginning of the budget, you decide, and finance department decides, we have X number of dollars in a budget for funding, you know? And I think that there's X in there, but you know, there might be an additional funding source available if it comes available at the time. But I really believe that we need to be careful, we need to be equitable across the boards as well. Events that are out there that bring in a lot of money, do we require them at some point to become standalone, that they have to work toward that process? I think that's important, rather than continuing to rely full-heartedly, completely, on the city for their funding. So I really believe that we need to, and Karen knows this well, because I think you're the one that recommended that way back as to limiting how much money we gave out to any particular source.
We did, we did...
15, was it?
Yeah.
15,000?
15,000. But what we did is, years ago, we decided to put the percentage out in the marijuana money, and that goes to nonprofits or whoever comes to the city for money. The couple, one example I can think of that came for more money that I think they're asking in addition to what they've requested through Trinidad Community Foundation. And not only is it a question of financial resources, it's a question of human resources. We don't have the staff to vet nonprofits.
I thought that's why we give the money to the foundation.
Yes, exactly.
So they're the ones to take care of that, so that's our policy for that.
You know, the other thing that I was, which I just came to the mind, would, it'd be a good idea to say is that, because we have the foundation, we have tourism, and we have coffers of our own, would it be good to say that if, that they can only apply through one source?
I think that, I've been trying to figure out why it is that they aren't all required to go through TCF. But I think it's because the amount that comes down there is fairly small, and TCF, I think, has a $2,500 limit of what they, they recommend that we approve, that they do. And there are entities in the city that are, that need far more than that if it's going to be a successful event for them. So maybe we should have different tiers of requests that we are willing to consider because some of them are important to businesses downtown, they're important to tourism. I think they're worth, those kind of larger requests are worth consideration because they do benefit the city significantly.
But would you want to, would you want to consider maybe a limit overall to what they would be seeking?
I think that would be helpful for them in coming up with their own budgets, knowing that there's only this much that we can even potentially get from the city. I think that would be helpful, but also protects the money that we're trying to serve.
I think the lady that can answer most of the questions is Cheryl. Can you come up here? Can you give us a lowdown on what your procedure and what you would think, before we do the budget, what kind of money we would have? I mean, you, you've been doing this for several years, so you kind of know exactly what's going on. I mean, we, we understand we want to do stuff like this old treaty to get more money and stuff, but we're coming to a point right now that we just don't have the money.
So this past budget, there, I wouldn't have recommended any money be made available. We just didn't have it. Sales tax didn't come in like we had hoped. Everything that's extra that we want this year, we're going to try to push through marijuana. We didn't have any extras. We even reduced our fleet budget from 500,000 to 200,000. So that's how tight the general fund budget is. We don't have a limit. I think you said 15,000. We took that away because we said, all right, the limit's 15,000. They all came forward and asked for 15,000 instead of, you know, 5,000. So that blew up. That didn't work.
I think it was 25.
Actually, you're right. It was 25. And that just didn't work because everybody wanted 25. Honestly, I don't know how it would have worked this past year. It couldn't have worked. I don't know what sales tax is going to produce this upcoming year. I mean, even if I said we had 50,000, then here we go again with staff having to vet. Who's going to get that? And is it first come, first served? And then we missed somebody that really needed it more than somebody else that we gave to. It just turns into...
Well, I think that's, and I think that's the hard position that you're in, is for you to give us that recommendation during budget time and say, this is all we got. You have to deal with it.
That's the way it should be.
The way it should be.
Yes.
I mean, I think you're the one that should make the decision on what we have because you know where the money's at. We're, I mean, we got the information from you, and you know, and I, I mean, I would be forgiving to some of this away, but right now with the way the budgets are and the way expenses are and everything else, I think, like Mr. Ruber said, it's important for us to take care of the city of Trinidad.
Exactly.
And that's, that's the most important. Our citizens and everything, utilities, we've already raised our utilities, every one of them this year, and all that's coming into play. So we need to be more frugal on what we're doing with our money. I mean, it's nice to help people, but if we can't do it, it's, and I think you're the person that, I mean, I wouldn't want to stick that on you, and I'm just kind of recommending for my own that, that you're the one that really should, should give us the information at the first of the year, what we have available.
The question that we're discussing is, do we feel there should be a policy, right? I mean, that, that hard. So if, if it was the consensus of council today, yes, we would like a policy. Does staff have or anticipate that they have at least a bare bones of a policy in mind? I mean, is that something that...
I mean, I think Cheryl and me, our recommendation would be no donations at all.
Anti-donation.
But we want to be sensitive to you all as the policymakers, so that's what we're looking for, is feedback as to what you'd like to see in that policy.
I think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think that, as we all would say, it's our job to be fiscally mindful of the city of Trinidad as first and foremost. However, if there is some means to help particularly important beneficial something, I think we should have the method in place to do it, so that may be the policy. At this point, there is no means to do it. However, it could be something as simple as this. If there's going to be a request, it needs to be by this date before the start of the next fiscal year. And then that would give us a clean out in the sense of like, you know, this, this budget is done, there's no room for it and that's, that's our policy.
Cheryl, uh, you mentioned that, uh, you guys were talking about maybe doing some of this funding through marijuana, how would that work?
So we do, you could increase the one percent that goes to Trinidad Community Foundation. That would be the simplest for staff. So instead of four percent to incentives, swap it, one percent to incentives, four percent to outside funding. Um, right now, we're working on fourth quarter marijuana and we're gonna actually have to turn some requests away. We don't have it, it did not come in even close to what we anticipated. I think we're over expended by ninety-thousand dollars in requests.
Now, while you're on that subject, I talked to Mr. Ruger about that and I was telling him that, take a look at those requests and say, only these, and then roll them over to the next group and these people that do something every quarter, they can only do one, one quarter.
Uh, it's gonna, we're gonna have that discussion Wednesday, we have to figure out what to do now, because now it's, it's not free for all. It's, now do we do first come, first served or fifty percent, I don't know.
So it's my understanding that we do have a policy, it's the one percent.
Yes, that's correct.
And TCF.
Correct.
So some of, the, the one funding request I remember, it was because of a situation with a, a nonprofit here in town. But when we were discussing this a couple of years ago, we had some feedback from other municipalities that were about our size and they do not fund nonprofits at all.
Mayor?
We talked to a couple of small communities in Colorado, so I think that's the best we can do.
You just brought that up too, Mr. Ruger, one of the policies.
Here's, here's another thought that I, I was just thinking about is that we pretty much waive everything possibly going forward and do like first and second quarter and just put that money aside till we know what those first and second quarter is, if that's what the case is.
First and second.
Quarter of our marijuana funding. And then, and then allocate that, let's say, in the fourth quarter, or however, something like that. And then do the same thing in the third and fourth quarter and allocate it the next year, I'm not sure how that would work. But this way, at least we would know what that part of money would be.
You're spending for sure dollars.
Yeah.
Well, we are doing that now.
Yeah, it makes sense, it makes sense.
We are.
The thing about it is, we're, we're doing that first quarter, second quarter.
It was made perfectly.
What we're doing it right now is the second quarter, what we're allocating from the first quarter proceeds, we're already doing that. And I'm talking about doing it by, by, uh, every six months rather than every three months.
There, there are nonprofits, however, that affect our bottom line, they affect foot traffic in our stores, they affect, um, tourism dollars, because they bring enough people here. So I think it would be unwise to ignore the fact that some of those entities do benefit the city. And that's why I don't think there's a good, it's a good idea to just say no to all nonprofits.
You know, I agree that, I think the situation and whatever you're, what, uh, entity you're talking about has access to tourism dollars as well. And what we did is, in the years past, when we gave quite large amounts of money to a, a, an event, we went back and looked at our sales tax revenues to see if there really was a, a benefit. And there really, there really wasn't. There really wasn't, there wasn't a, a jump in sales tax revenues or anything like that. So, I mean, I think if that's the case, if we're talking about an event that a nonprofit puts on, I think then it, they need to go to tourism for that money. Cause their parameters are specific, has to draw people in within beyond, what, fifty miles out of the City of Trinidad.
Well, maybe one.
You know, it's, it's really tough for you and for Steve to put all this together, but I think you guys generally have a better idea of what, what we need. And we do have a policy, we are giving some money for the foundation and, you know, maybe we could bump it up one more percent. But we also have to be fair to every event, so if one event wants fifteen thousand, the other event wants fifteen and then the other one, I mean, how do you choose? So if we made it, and that's kinda why we wanted to give it to the foundation and it's on their, and they, they put it at a minimum, so everybody has a fair chance to get the twenty-five or whatever it is. But I, I would agree that there's some, uh, events that need to be funded, but if we don't have it, we can't do it. And this year is, I agree, I think, we, there's no way to donate anything. We gotta worry about digging up some money for Noah's Ark, we gotta worry about other money. And this is getting to be a, a point now that's really putting you in a tough position and, and us too, you know, so.
I think that, you know, there's one mistake that maybe we, maybe made way back when we started getting a lot of revenue. Did think a lot of back then, but now it's come to be is that maybe what we should've done, and if it ever comes to our, our proceeds again to build, is to take and put a, kinda like we have our rainy day fund, put a rainy day event fund. So that when it does come around to the time when the things do get slim, that you have something to, to rely on. And then, of course, we would allocate that money like the Otter says, you know, going over. But anyway, that, that's, that's hindsight, but it could be something in the future that might be something, a benefit.
How much sales tax does a city get? Is it three point?
Oh, for, well, three percent to general fund and one percent to capital or three point?
Mr. Mayor, one last thought, that I just wanted to point out, we also, um, negotiate every year with our unions on cost of living increases. And this year, we, you know, we're lower than we have been able to be in previous years. So it puts Cheryl and I in an awkward position when, you know, we were able to find money for these private entities when, you know, we told our unions, we can't do anymore to help them out in the harder economic times as well. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, those are all things you gotta take into consideration.
Yeah.
And it comes to the point of, do we fund any of these, or less amount, never, I think that's.
And I think it's all ultimately your call on, on what you wanna do, but we just need some parameters and some more certainty, um, as we go through our budgets and our cycle.
It's our call, but we could only do a.
Cheryl will make a recommendation.
I mean, unfortunately, that's the truth, I mean, we have to go by what, you know.
Moving forward this year, people are still coming forward. I don't know, if you just say right off the bat, we couldn't even budget three-hundred-thousand dollars for our fleet. And we couldn't give the cost of living increase that we wanted to, because it was not a great year last year. And, you know, we are fortunate to get the extra stuff for marijuana, but that might pretty much be diminished completely, who knows?
It's just going down.
Hey, Ms. Navarre, do you agree with Councilman Williamson that it would be good to have it set at the, when we're doing budgeting, to say, this is how much we have and we, we built it into the budget, so, and make them part of that request? Because I, I do think it's bizarre that an organization that has a, an event planned for this year is just now getting to ask money about it. I mean, what? That makes no sense to me and it seems like if they knew, we have to be professional about this, we present this and see what we can get and then they can decide whether or not they're gonna actually do their thing based on what's available to them and what other sources they have, that makes sense.
Well, I think the, the public needs to know that services to the community are required. Yes.
So honestly, the last three budgets, when we're going through it, we're always under, especially with ongoing costs. And so Audrey and I go through it and, okay, we moved training, they didn't, they asked for six thousand, they didn't spend it last year, okay, let's drop it to three. I mean, we're shaving the budget as much as we can anyway to get where we need to be. By all means, you can have them request at budget time, but it's usually not gonna fit. And then, I mean, we, we just have to be very clear that, you know, our budget's tight and it's likely that you won't receive anything, but feel free to apply, I, I don't know. I just wouldn't wanna give them that ultimate hope and it's not their.
If we had a percentage of the general fund or whatever allocated, even if it was a small amount, that would be the budget. So if it's ten thousand dollars, that's the budget, so.
And I, I think we're in this cycle right now, where we're at, it's probably gonna last for a couple of years. You know, and I, I think we'll eventually start creeping back up, but it may be another, you know, three years before it gets built back up.
And I, I disagree, I don't think we should have a general fund line budget for staff, I don't.
You know, we're locking out what staff could use the money for.
Right, I think that's why I, I was.
If anything, marijuana, exactly, we could use the marijuana money, because it's.
What, what would be the percentage if we added one more percent to that? Let me just.
Be true dollars.
Well, no, no, I mean.
So right now it's one percent, we get maybe about forty-five-hundred dollars a quarter.
So if we put two percent, then we kick it up to about ten thousand?
And then that was, healthy quarters, this was not such a healthy quarter, I can't remember what this quarter's gonna be.
Would, would that be your recommendation to?
That, for me, and I believe Otter, that would be the easiest, just because it's not coming to the city. TCF handles it, it's out of council's hands and out of our hands and, but that, to me, that's the simplest.
I, I would go with that a little bit, uh, just, and help, and then that way, you know, we are trying to be fair to everybody.
Yeah.
And we're not taking away from the, the revenues for city operations.
We don't have to give less down to raise next year.
Wow.
I know. Okay, any other, any other thoughts?
More executive session. This is fun, that's due.
Uh, as far as anything else coming, as far as any future work sessions, unless there might be another one before our retreat, probably not, right?
No.
Okay, so a lot of this will be discussed, there are other things besides this.
When is that retreat?
Like twenty-fourth.
Uh, February twenty-fourth. And, um, and I have the draft agenda squared away, so I'll, I'll get you copies before you leave, or we can go print them right now, so you can take a look at that. And that'll be published next week to the public.
Due time is four twenty-three, uh, we have the work session. Okay, thank you guys.